It's like. This guy's just.
It's okay, Steve, calm down.
What crazy hell. I never got so many.
Franco.
I never.
Yeah, thank you.
We're in the air now.
Okay. Uh Holly is in Virginia, dedication. And there she's going to write minutes based on our recording, so let's make sure your. Mics are on. When you speak, okay?
Yep.
And Caroline has gone to a music concert tonight, so we came in second to that. So, all right, so we'll start the. June meeting of the Canada's planning board. I'll just call. I'm here, Mr. Craig. Mr. Grope.
Here.
Youthie.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Vice Chair, Mackonsky.
Here.
Okay. Stand and salute the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, um privilege of the floors, or anything anybody wants to mention? This point? Okay, I'll just mention in the packet you all received this one page thing, it's an insert for your code book. Officers? You didn't go. I think. Oh yeah, that's, that's the one that can only pack. Yeah, look. So all you do is go to the code book, whatever page it is. Take out the old one and put the new one in. And then you'll be right up to date. Yeah, that came in mine, so I already have.
Did you get the agenda and meeting minutes in your packet? I got.
Yeah.
Okay, I got two.
I did.
Just making sure you didn't.
I was just looking to see if I got two of these, that you can get one, but I didn't.
He turned it with out of the woods.
It wasn't. She was going out of, Holly was going out of the town on the twentieth, but I gave her the packet, that's last Thursday. Not last Thursday, Thursday before or something. Okay, we'll make sure that she gets that.
I got behind, like, I want to say something Thursday.
Wait, she had the agenda. Be late. All right, so we'll go to the approval of the minutes. Corrections? They looked good to me. Well, I, there had been one correction, I sent it to Holly and she put it in here, so my correction was already in there.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Harry, thank you. So go to reports, town board meeting. Town board met June tenth. First thing they did was as they uh. Met as the Board of Health and they had a septic placement variance. Or Mr. Nagy down on County Road thirty seven. And it was just a setback variance, and so that was approved. Next thing they did was. They opened a public hearing. To discuss or yet take input on the town is uh planning to pass a town law. That will uh give a tax exemption, property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters. And ambulance workers living in the town of Canada's. I don't know the details of how long you have to serve, how much you have to serve each year to get it. But they're looking at drafting a law to do that. Um, there was a question because. Volunteer firemen and EMT workers uh are eligible to get a IRS tax. Two hundred and fifty dollars just ashed back. So my question was, will this affect that? And so I didn't know. So they're gonna look into that, and it, you know. Maybe a choice of one or another, I don't know the dollar amount of the tax exemption, what they're thinking about, you know, what kind of. But they opened a public hearing, nobody really talked about it, and so they're moving on. Regular reports, not a whole lot, um not anything, uh highway department's been really busy, obviously, this time of year. Doing a lot of highway work on Lawrence Hill Road. The east part, the south part, the north did it, they're going to do some. Repaving of all of that. Did uh some chips applications going on Holmes Road in July.
They're doing the ditch at up there now, too.
Yeah, I saw they done the ditches.
Yeah, getting a new culvert up there today.
Oh, really?
Yeah, nice. Thirty foot versus a twenty. Thought that was good.
Uh mowing, first round is complete. Looks like they started the second one down on Canada's Lake Road at least. One of the towns had borrowed, was using this piece of equipment they called a leveler, or the evener. Evens up the shoulders. It's co-owned by several towns and. Caught fire.
Yeah.
And they had a small problem with it. Um, they put the fire out, he didn't really know what damage was uh. Done, he didn't really explain what caused it, but it was a close call for the operators, is what he called it. So I think he had to fill out a, a safety report or something like that. And that was pretty much it for the highway, only a lake watershed and water quality is great. Clarity in the lake is thirteen feet, which is good. Town of Richmond finally got a permit from the DEC to clear out, clean out the Mill Creek. Where it's been a problem for years. Finally got a permit from DEC, so they're planning to do some work there in mid-July. Um, he was, Terry was a little concerned that that's could take care of the creek, but the outlet, he thought might also need work. The permit is just for the creek, when it comes down, so it was. Um, blue green algae reported in several spots in. May. Typical, he said, not excessive. And uh DEC or somebody stocked thirty-three thousand walleye fingerlings in the lake in May, so. Should be able to catch walleyes there now.
Thirteen thousand?
Thirty-three thousand.
Thirty-three?
Yeah, fingerlings, so.
Geez, wonder if they were raised down here? I thought that was a walleye.
I don't, I don't think the college raised fish.
Oh, okay.
Stocking.
Yeah, they wouldn't, that wouldn't be that many.
State Fish Hatcheries do that, and. Uh, Water Department, Water Operations, everything's okay. Um. Old business, they talked about, it's gonna be a postage increase, let me just mention it. Maybe your group might want to pre-buy. The town's gonna pre-buy some forever stamps. So, um. Let me date, let's see. Yeah. Yeah, something like that, so uh you might wanna buy some stamps early.
How much are going up? Do you say I missed that?
I don't know.
Oh, you're just.
It's, it's an increase, uh. I don't think they told us how much it was going to go up.
I think it's almost sixty cents now, isn't it?
Five cents.
Wow, so what, what, what's the stamp gonna be now?
That's what's seventy.
Seventy-three?
Oh, I missed it. Hey, Harry. Jersey Hill Engineering Study, they awarded the contract uh. To Barton. Logit.
Logitus.
Logitus, uh is the engineering firm, they begin to make contract and they. Had an initial meeting uh looking at the work that needs to be done to stabilize Jersey Hill Road. New business. They set a public hearing on a. Resolution to override the tax levy. They do this every year. It's kind of a fallback position in case the town needs to exceed uh. Regulation on how much tax can do. Yeah, two percent. Uh, let's see. They set a public hearing for another septic tank variance at the for their next meeting. They s. They had a resolution to accept a propane contract with Noco. Switching away from Superior. There were some questions about the tank, apparently our town owns the, the in-ground tank. So there were questions about with Noco service or what would be the requirements. So I think they put that resolution on hold because there were a few questions. Uh, for us. I usually get the town discount from Superior.
Yeah.
And I had that all set, so I don't know what's gonna happen since the town.
I get it from Noco.
And you, you get it from Noco?
Cause it, you, it used to be Noco and then they went to Superior.
Oh, so I should contact Noco.
And Noco will match.
Yeah.
So, and I assume Superior will match this.
Yeah. Yeah. So. You're aware of that, right, Dwight? You can get a, a reduction in the cost of propane?
I don't have propane.
You'll have to listen. Other than that, uh. Got your own gas well. There's a uh, a family, uh, Tom, you, the Ewing's who live down on the lake. They currently own two adjoining properties. They live in one and uh. They want to build a new place for them for a full-time residence. So they're proposing, they want, they're going to. Proposing to demolish the two existing buildings, build a new one, I have a little bit of the plan here. But the. Their plan in uh water lines. In their plan, and so they came to the town asking if the town would give them permission. To have the water line moved so that they can build their new property. Um, they had been in talking to, to me previously and they obviously need a site plan. But before anything else was gonna happen, they needed to get some. So the attorney was here also at the meeting, Sheila, Sheila Foal. And they talked about that, and so the town approved giving them the. Authority to move the water line. And they have to interact with. River supplies, water, the water authority or somebody, so, but they got that approval, so.
The service line?
Yeah.
Not the water main. The service.
The main.
No, the main.
The water.
The main runs down, uh. I don't read the note. Anyway, they have to move the main.
Oh.
So they, they have to move it up. The road up. Okay, away from the property and then continue north and then back to hook up to the original. So there were concerns about the logistics of actually doing it, you know, how long it was be taking them to do. What about residents, water supply in the meantime, and so the attorney was here and she was on top of all of that, so. The bottom line was the town actually uh. Gave their authority, gave up, gave the approval for that to move ahead. And so eventually it'll come to us. They're very thorough, they got all the engine, it's gonna be a. Rubber stamp for us pretty much once it's done, but he will be coming to us. Two pretty nice fucking buildings down there right now, but they want a bigger and better one, yes?
Must be shallow lots.
No, they go all the way back. To the road.
They just wanna build up near the road?
No, the, the problem is they wanna build basically closer. Back farther from the lake.
Yeah.
Doing that, they're gonna run into the water supply, so.
Normally everybody wants to put them on the lake.
Well, this is a big place they're looking at, a huge place. So anyway, that was, that was discussed quite a bit at the meeting. Next thing they did was they gave a formal request to us as a planning board to review. And update the town code chapter ninety-two, which is sewers. Um, they keep getting variants of requests every month, it seems lately, because New York's, New York State. Requirements are much less stringent than our town. So I was actually going to ask Caroline if she might be willing to, you know, look into that, and I would help if she needed help or if somebody else would want to. I took a quick look, basically, there's, there's this. New York State. Appendix seventy-five, which tells what the state regulations are, and then ours. I looked up. Joining towns, Richmond, Bristol, South Bristol, all use the kind of New York State. Personally, New York State is. Pretty close, you know, ten feet, these property lines and things like that, I'm not sure that. But my thought would be to investigate, why did we set them like this in the first place? So I was gonna suggest. Contacting Mark Melmedir, Mark Earl, maybe even Chris Sanger, you know, what was the thinking? Of why they came up with such a stringent one, and maybe that should be considered. So, um. Unless somebody else would like to take it on, I was gonna talk to Caroline.
I'll, I'll look into it.
Oh.
Yeah. I'll talk to Mark. Yeah, I, I.
The two Marks would.
Right. Would know, Mark Earl.
Mark Earl or Mark Melmedir.
I looked in briefly to see one of their towns and it was interesting because some towns have pretty strict. Like this one, you know, they have, I forgot what town it was, but. You, you know, building on slab, water service line, you know, distances from underground utilities, surface water, public well water, and. It seems like some towns are pretty strict, you know, in that. They kinda say everything. Um, and I, I didn't read, I couldn't find this actual.
Yeah, that's the, that's the document that the local towns.
I'll try through that. Wondering what's the problem with the way it is now, I mean, I, I find it, I mean, I listen to these public hearings and uh. I think it's kinda nice that. You know, usually it's Bill Grove.
Yes.
And he's pretty thorough, but there has been times, you know, where, you know, what's the slope and runoff, and I think there was a couple over on Old Bald Hill Road.
Hill that were.
Cause they asked for, we have some more information, so.
Yeah.
I don't know what the. Reason why it has to be changed, because it'll be easier for the town board?
Well, the town board said they're. They're tired of doing the various reviews, and if you listen to them. They're pretty. Not much of a review.
Right.
By the, by the, by the Board of Health, you know, they, they accept the Bill Grove, he's usually the one. And he is good, but. I know in the past, sometimes it's been kind of just a convenience, you know?
Yeah.
Didn't wanna cut some trees down or something, and so.
And I think five feet is like, I mean.
I think that's ten.
Or ten, ten something like, is that from?
Property line and it, it gives you the.
Because I guess if I had a neighbor that was fairly close by, and they wanna put a septic five feet from my property line, I would feel a little upset, I'd rather have the eight foot, but.
Well, it's, you know, it's not. Not saying that we should do it, you know, exactly like the state, or maybe there'll be good reasons why it should stay the way it is. But the town board, as the Board of Health. Don't seem to be paying a lot of attention to.
Well, in general, variances shouldn't, you, we see this with the zoning board and we see it with these requests for septics. Variances shouldn't be granted every single time, that's a sign that the code needs to be changed, variances should be a rare thing. That they're granted, which we don't necessarily see, so if we're seeing a variance be granted every single time for these subjects. It means something in the code needs to be reviewed. We, I think we would all agree, ten feet is probably not what we wanna see in our rural town. But maybe the eighty feet is too strict.
I think we're seeing them when they're. You know, like Old Bald Hill Road where old properties are pretty close, so I. But we're not seeing, we're not seeing all the ones that are.
Except that are go through without requiring variance.
I don't know how many septic permits were issued versus how many times they had to be.
Yeah.
A variance, and. My experience in this town is, if you want a variance, you're ninety-eight percent. Gonna get it. For zoning board of appeals. And I have talked to other, uh, you know, other towns where they. Issue virtually no variance.
Yeah, okay.
So. I think a lot of it has to do with the. Why the zoning board of appeals.
Yep.
Do we know what the bear, the common variance is? Is it the eighty-foot setback? That people are getting variances for, or is it a wider variety of things in the code they're getting?
No, it's, it's the eighty-foot setback.
And it's, it has to do with some, a lot of them are to have to be specially designed because of the perk and the way the soil is, and there just isn't the room. Do the eighty feet.
Yeah, but that's a good point, Birch, I don't know how many ver- uh septic license approvals have been given.
Mm-hmm.
So that might be something to think about.
Yeah, and that would, that would be interesting information, so.
Just coincidence, that'll tend that they brought this up, cause you, you mentioned that last month.
Well, I just mentioned that it seems like every month.
Okay.
They, I mean, they.
Okay.
They've said it before, they've said we should change our code, we should change our code, well. Chris caught me, the supervisor, Estola caught me and spoke to me, and I said, hey, make it official, send us a request, you know? To the planning board to look at and review and possibly modify. Um, so that's, that's what they did at their meeting, they sent a formal request to us.
Did you make a list of what is different?
Well.
From the state to us? I mean.
I didn't, but yeah, it's right there, it's very, it's a nice little table inside the uh. Appendix from the state. It gives all of the distances and uh. There's a table, I think it goes over ten pages.
Yeah.
You know, and then I printed out our chapter ninety-two, the sewers right there.
Okay, so.
I, I didn't make those, but you can.
Yeah, so we, we, we basically kind of follow the state codes now?
No, no, we're much stricter.
Much stricter.
In fact.
As far as setback?
Yes.
Are setbacks, but some of these, but I'm sure some of these other factors aren't really being addressed. Except, is there building code that? Has to be filed when they apply for a permit for those septic, I mean, there might be other.
I don't know what the requirements are for a permit to slate of.
When I did mine, I had to, I had to use an engineer.
I think that's in there that they.
Yeah, so you have to use.
I think that's in our chapter already, that it has to be an engineer.
But because, because Ontario County doesn't. Ontario County does not have a health department.
Eighty?
Right.
Oh, eighty feet?
So.
To be, okay.
If, if you did a septic in Monroe County, it has to go to the Monroe County Health Department.
Right.
When I did ours, which is ten years ago, it was. Um, we had to, in order to get a permit to do it, it had to be an engineer, a licensed engineer doing the study.
Mm-hmm.
Or doing the permit.
Right.
And then it was approved by the code enforcement.
And I am pretty certain that's the way ours code does it. It's the engineer will approve to design, yeah, sign it, and then the code enforcement officer just signs off on it.
It seems like it's not. The problems are that. Specific property just doesn't have the eighty feet.
Right. Yep. Yep.
But if they have eighty feet, then it's not an issue.
Right.
And then, so we don't know how.
Board of Health here never sees those because of correct CEO just issues a permit. So that might be a thing to look at, you know, like you said. If, if we're always giving variances on every request, then probably something should be done, or. We should reaffirm the, the reason why the code is as it is and enforce, you know, not, not just what are the variants. Somebody comes. So. All right, so those are some. Factors to look at.
So we're gonna find that?
Yeah. So that was, uh, again, they, they talked a little bit about. Um. It was interesting, the resolution. Well, the, the new business, it says. Town board request for planning board review and update. Town code chapter ninety-two to mirror New York State sewer septic code. I said, wait a minute, wait a minute, you know, they don't need to tell us what to do, you know, if that's what you want. Money board doesn't have to do anything.
Right.
Nice, you know. Oh, yeah, you know, and so I argued, I said, well, you know, if you want us to look at it, look at it, you know, surrounding towns. Look at perhaps reasons of why it's written the way it is, okay, but if you're telling us to mirror the state, then. Oh, okay, so.
So the resolution got changed?
It wasn't a resolution, it was just a formal request.
Okay.
Town board request. Okay, so that was pretty much it, let's see. You didn't hear Stanley Proctor?
Oh, I did, yeah.
I, I didn't know.
Yeah.
I hadn't heard it at the time, but that was. Before. Okay, any questions about any of that?
Wasn't he, didn't we just talk about him also?
Well, they.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were doing a huge timber harvesting down on his property. Turns out they had submitted a timber harvest request back in, I think, December of last year, someone forgot, and somebody forgot. That's why I questioned him, so Birch right away found out, yeah, we had looked at it and approved it, but yeah, they were doing timber harvesting on his property.
I think he came up, cause he had so many. It was.
Violation.
CEO on the.
You had all kinds of violations and.
The poor guy. I saw him within the last year, and Eddie seemed.
Well, I saw him, he came in with one of his friends and he was gonna self-divide, and that didn't go anywhere, so.
That's true, man.
Okay, so that's Stanley.
Those report, though.
Yeah. Maybe more information anyway, if it, if it is, just let me know and I won't give you all these details. You can always watch it on Zoom.
Yeah, that's exciting, too.
Okay, geez. Uh, make sure your mic is on, county planning board?
Mine will be much shorter, Ted. Much, yeah, uh, tended the. I must have left it in the car that. Left it home or whatever, what I did.
Dog ate it.
Yeah. I had, I had to look at the calendar, what was the meeting, it was June twelfth, tended the June twelfth meeting. We had the. We just had ten for Quorum. Uh, it's currently, we've got two vacancies, be three vacancies as of. One day after next, but unless we are able to fill it. Really, nothing, nothing to report, uh, n- nothing from our local. Neighbors here, uh. And uh, from the others, uh, nothing of any interest, a lot of. You get text amendments, map amendments, small subdivisions, things of that nature. But I did ask Linda your question about the campaign, and she said. She wants to try. She's kind of at a loss for some ideas. So, maybe I shouldn't open my mouth. Okay, but I said, just I said, boy. Uh, Caitlin just did this one on the, go, cause she mentioned you for some reason. I forget what it was, I said, gee, yeah, she just did one down at Naples. Boy, it really got her thinking, and uh, she said, uh, she'd like for you to call her if, if you could.
Do I get credit for doing that?
I don't know, but she would be, she would be very receptive to your call. I, and I didn't commit you to anything, okay?
Okay.
But uh. Yeah, but, but your name came up in the discussion. And I think because maybe I mentioned, well, you'll let, I think that's how, you know, last year I was with Linda or Caitlin and I, we attended your, the one at the training. Uh, facility there, and uh, that's how it started. So, again, she would be very receptive to your call.
Sure, I'll give her a call.
Okay, okay, but she would like to try to have something, I would like her to have something to do, cause I could attend that for two hours or something, but. Really, nothing to report on the referrals. Can I ask a question, like, uh, how do we? Can I ask it now or wait till later? Uh, how do we stand for, say, August meeting?
Okay. We uh, we don't have any applicants, however, we do have one person who has said they would take it temporarily.
Okay.
But with a, a limit of six months.
Okay.
No longer than six months.
So.
But it's Birch.
That's I kind of thought, I had thought.
I didn't want to use it for seven years.
I'll bet you.
Think they want.
I'll bet you maybe Birch, he might as well do it, but so along those lines.
So I mentioned, I, I talked to Christopher Vastola, he doesn't have any applicants either. I was querying the town board last month, also, you know, we need somebody, anybody. You got any friends? And there were a little discussion about, well. If it wasn't a planning board member, how would it communicate? We can work that out, you know, that's, that's minor.
Yeah.
Uh, if, if we could get someone to, that would be interested in doing that, so.
Then again, she.
So, uh, and I talked to Linda, I mentioned it to Linda, that we had a temporary person. Uh, they're holding off until.
Okay, well, great.
Everybody else, everybody else an opportunity.
Yeah, great. You know, and, and it's not.
Formalize, I mean, they'll formalize that, we, we don't actually do what the town board does it, so.
That's not, you know, really out of line, like, we can't find anyone, because we've got several towns out there. They've had vacancies over a year.
Really?
You can't get, uh. We've, we've had them longer than a year.
Keep doing it.
I really.
Raised.
Uh, I, I, I just, I, I guess I'm.
I know, I know your reasons, okay.
Yeah, and, uh. Would you want to come to the next month's meeting, or just it doesn't? I, I don't, I don't see a point.
I think you could step in.
I did show you where to show up and. We've just had two new members. Uh, started, yeah, we have one that started, uh, actually just like, uh, this month, June. And, uh, one just previous to that. So that, we've seen some turnover. In fact, that, that individual from Canada who. I don't know if I told you this, but he, during one of our meetings, this is back in March, and, uh. All of a sudden, this guy had credentials a mile long in the planning area, and architectural. Uh, issues and all that, and, uh, so he came in with an attitude that, uh. We should be doing things a lot different. And what we're doing really wasn't sufficient, so we're, we're speaking on a referral and, uh. All of a sudden, he jumps in and he starts talking about procedures and everything else. Everyone let him go for a few minutes, and finally, I, I, I got Paul, the chair, he's, Paul, so he let me talk. And I told him, I says, this is not the venue for that. If you have any concerns of the way this board is handling these referrals, you would better talk to Tom Herbie. And, uh, he did the very next day, he sent a memo up, Tom was on vacation. But apparently, Tom spoke to him later and, uh, he since resigned. He resigned, he resigned the next month, yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
That's too bad, because it sounded like he had some energy, but.
Oh, he did, but, uh, yeah, the way he was coming into it. That, that, so that was one of our.
All right.
Well, that's good, thanks for that, Birch, uh, and I'm sure by then, uh, we can find someone, but, uh. And I'm sure Linda was happy about that.
Yeah, but she was, that there wouldn't be a gap. Okay, anything for Steve? By the way, uh, we do get minutes of the meeting. Email, I get them as a planning board chairman, email to me if anybody's interested, I could send them. Or you can get them from the commie.
They're probably posted.
Yeah, they are.
Website.
I even get them. On the phone, yeah, because she won't send them anymore, she stopped it like six months ago. So I got my little phone, I gotta look at it like this.
So, uh, you know, if you ever do want to see any details.
I think as long as we have a planning board member attending, the current procedure is good, but maybe we revisit if we have. Uh, representing who's not on this board, maybe we revisit how we do that.
Yeah.
And it's, that's been brought up before, that's one of the issues, the concerns, that you, you do have a, a number of the, uh. Members who aren't a member of the local board.
Are they?
And it's like, it's always, uh, they, they, they want this communication from. The individual back to the board, and a lot of them, they walk out of the meeting and they go their, their own way and. There's no communication back to the boards. Uh, and that's one of their, they, they really want that and they stress that, in fact, uh.
Whoever takes it down. Knows they have to report to the planning board.
Right.
Yep.
But that's up to the town board.
Right.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Well, I certainly appreciate all these years you've been doing this. Your reporting back to us is good, because you filter it down to things that, you know, either are interesting or apply. Apply to our town.
I wish we had more of the things that were interesting, but, you know, if you looked at it, well, you read them, so you see what we get every month and, uh. I thought you did, I thought you did look at it.
I look at the list of referrals, once in a while, I'll look at it.
Okay.
I rely on you report back to us.
What would you say, Birch?
I said it's a good thing we don't have, that means we don't want a lot of activity.
Right.
Yeah.
We have very few that.
Right.
Go to the town.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Uh, zoning board, uh, they met, I don't know what they acted on, uh.
From what I read on the agenda, it was May eighth, it was on County Road thirty-seven. Someone wanted to put a pole barn or a cover off their barn. But the setback to whatever road it was and. They approved the variance. And then went into executive session.
All right. And didn't report on that.
Nor did they say what the executive session was for. You know, it's required by New York State Open Meetings Law.
Yeah, there are rules, but you have to state the purpose of the meeting or the. Topic of the meeting, you don't have to sort of.
Results, if you take an action. If they take an action, that has to be in the minutes and that has to be available.
All right. Thank you, Birch, for looking at that. Code enforcement, um, we have a copy of your, their monthly report here. Last month, there were a series of violations, as you mentioned, Steve, that were on the Proctor property down there. Got any questions about these, you can talk to Joe Miller or CEO. Comprehensive plan, any result, any reports?
Uh, nothing too much, we canceled our June meeting, um, I was not well, so we canceled that meeting. We are planning to, uh, meet July eleventh. Uh, as planned, and I'm just kind of still chugging along on some stuff. I feel like we've made a significant amount of progress. Um, and hoping to sort of have the survey ready to go out and some mailings to go out in the very near future. Uh, some of the website stuff is delayed us a little bit, but I think, uh, we found a resolution to that.
Well, good. Thank you. Um, old business, uh, we were waiting for survey maps. For the Clark and Peters subdivision. I did meet with Terry Peters. Called me earlier this week, last week, and he had his final subdivision maps. Very good, so that was in Thursday evening. Looked at them and they were exactly what we had proved as preliminary. And so it was his, his, it was complete. Still waiting on the Clark subdivision, that's those two properties side by side down on. County Road thirty-seven. They have six months. To get the, to get that. Survey map in six months from the date of our conditional approval. So I'll look at the date and if it gets close, I'll send him a note on it.
That was the property, the two houses?
Two houses, one house was overlapping over the property line, and then there was a pond that was back there, so. Basically.
I'm surprised he hasn't gotten there, cause I think he's been doing work on it.
Oh, he's been wor- he was working on it before he got the approval. He was, but he's using a survey group, uh, out of Wayland. Can't remember their name, but they've done work for the town before, so I don't, I don't know what the holdup is on that. So that's the old business. The new business, we already talked about it, and this request from the town board and subject. And that's all I have. Anybody have anything else for privilege of the floor?
Uh, I, oh, you go ahead, mine's kind of long.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, you just mentioned, uh, surveying, it just brought something to mind that, you know, the Gerald, jury of. There's Jared, Jared Rans.
Jared Rans.
Yeah, we've been coming in a few times and.
Right.
Uh. Apparently, he's getting active in this area. I'm just mentioning, if anyone's perhaps looking for a surveyor, we, we got him for the church over here. Survey the, the cemetery plots, and then he was just, uh, my neighbor's the other day. Uh, doing some work for him, and, uh. But, uh. Just, I'm just throwing.
I talked to him and he said his business was increased to the point where he could do that full-time, he didn't have to have a second job, so. He's pretty thorough on his man stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I have, I just had a list of like three or four that have done work for the town, I don't recommend any.
No, I'm not.
They come in on Thursday, I say, here are some that do work in our town and let them go. There's this guy and there's the, uh. Years, Jeremy Years, that lives over on the Gribble Hill, he does a lot, and he's trying to build up his business too.
Then one other question, so if you're going to step in, uh, you'll have the appointment by, that will be in effect by the, uh, August meeting? Will they be able to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Because your term expires.
July thirty-first.
So. It'll be on, it probably will be on the July.
Oh.
Town board.
Okay.
Agenda.
Okay, but just maybe perhaps you could, uh, if it is intended, uh.
I'll just send an email to Chris.
Okay. Because I've seen it happen, we'll get prospective members and they have to sit there a few months, because they forgot to notify the town. The town hasn't done their thing, to get the appointment in effect, and it kind of sometimes takes several months.
Should, should.
Yeah, right, we'll get that.
Cause the town has to approve it and then the county.
Yeah, and then they issue, the county will issue a resolution also.
Right.
So.
So.
Oh, actually, so, I wonder, town, well, the town will do it at the July meeting.
But would that give the, the county then?
Planning.
Town, I don't. I don't know how, say, if the town did it at their July meeting.
Yes, so that deadline for the next P E Q meeting was today, so it won't go to the.
The resolutions coming.
So it won't go to. For July first and then three weeks later.
Is the resolution just covered right from the board supervisors for the Ontario County?
Yeah, it has to go through the Planning and Environmental Quality Committee first. Uh, which there, so the town board meets the second Monday.
Yes.
So they'll meet the eighth, the deadline for the July twenty-second. P E Q meeting will be July fifteenth, so they'll have a week from the July eighth town board meeting to get it to the county by the fifteenth.
Hmm.
It'll go to P E Q on the twenty-second and then. The Board of Supervisors will be August first.
Okay, cause then.
Things should work for the August.
Yeah, cause then the meeting is until the second Wednesday of them.
Right.
Okay.
I will, I'll, I'll send an email to Christopher Vastolo.
Okay.
And mention to him this tight timeline.
Yeah.
Let him work it out.
Yeah, right, cause if they don't do it, then he just sits there and he, he, it's no.
Well.
Okay.
Wouldn't have made you go.
Well.
And somebody, you know, like. Anything there, anything.
Well, like last, like, like this month, we had ten, we had one absence, uh. You don't have a quorum, so you, you. You have to.
So when I go, I'll say, well, Steve told me a lot of things he needs to change.
All the procedures have to be updated. Okay, thank you. Caitlin.
So.
Privilege of the floor.
Am, as part of my day job, um, I work with the Climate Smart, uh, Communities. Is a program through New York State, um, the D E C sort of manages, it's a grant program. So basically, um, towns, villages, counties, cities, all earn a certain number of points and then they're eligible for grants. Um, the town of Canada is one town, um, that's working on it. Um, but there's different categories of points, so I work with the D E C on a working group and we review applications. I specifically work on, um, section five, which is all about, um, sustainable materials management. So things related to recycling, reuse, things like that. So one of the things you can earn points on is construction and demolition degree policies. So basically, that's policies regulating things like, um, leftover, it might be building construction. It might be home construction, it's things like brick, drywall, shingles, lumber, doors, windows, cabinets. Um, anything that sort of can be diverted from the landfill when you're doing construction. So we're working on redoing that section in this program. It's very vague, uh, it's not really clear how you can earn points. Um, so we had a meeting last week and we had a lot of discussion about. Policies versus legislation, um, versus code amendment. And I said I had a planning board meeting on Monday and I would kind of, um. Chat with you guys a little bit about it, just as a planning board. Um, our thoughts on very specifically, especially like deconstruction versus demolition. So demolition, you just knock a house down, everything goes into a dumpster and it goes into a landfill.
Isn't it designated, because the state put in these specific requirements? Demolition debris has to go to a. Specific.
So.
Area for. Okay, can't go to, my understanding, can't go, cause we have that in the county, every time we, we get a referral. I kind of started it, because, uh, when they found out about the, the state requirement that they implemented this. That it has to be, you can't just have George refuse show up and truck it all the way, it has to go to a designated landfill. That's my understanding, and I was wondering.
No, not quite, so a landfill has to, there's different types of waste. There's con- construction and demolition debris, uh, C and D. And then there's M S W, is municipal solid waste, so that's your household garbage. Um, you know, typical garbage is M S W, C and D is something that's very specific from construction. Some landfills take both, some only take one or another. Um, there's a lot of landfills in our area that take both, our landfill here in Ontario County takes both. There's different rates, um, one may cost more than the other as a tipping fee.
So when Joe issues a demolition permit?
Yes.
That permit shows where the waste is going?
Uh, I don't know, that's a great question, so that's kind of what I wanted to chat about is. So a way that we want to change this is if a town made changes to their code. Where maybe for a permit to demolish, it's more expensive than to decon- to deconstruct. Would basically, you would go in and you would remove things that are usable. You know, you would take out the cabinets, you would take out windows, you would, um, save lumber that was usable. So maybe it's more expensive to get a demolition permit and it's less to get a de- deconstruction. Or maybe there's an inventory waiting period where you have to wait, you know, X amount of months to demolish. And you can start deconstruction right away, so these would be optional. Things that towns could opt into in order to earn points within this climate smart communities.
What are the points worth? Is it worth anything or?
Yes, so once you earn a certain number of points, you get grants, you get money.
You get money.
Yes, yeah.
If you deconstruct a house. And you've got a stack of windows and doors and, and. What do you do with it?
Yeah, so that's a great question, absolutely, um, so that's.
Most of that stuff's gonna be subcode anyways, so you can't reuse it.
So that's a whole different section within this climate smart communities is encouraging outlets for the material. So this section is specifically looking, um, right now, the term is policies and legislation. That, um. That promote C and D reuse. And so we had a long discussion about, like, what are policies, what are legislation? So another aspect would be policies could be, let's say, the town was redoing town hall. And they could have a policy where everything that's salvageable is. And they could have a policy where everything that's salvageable is reused. So if there's light fixtures or doors that can be reused, those items are salvaged. So to me, policies are very much inward looking and legislation. Is sort of outward looking, legislation would be like code amendments and things. And I guess that's really specifically what I wanted feedback from you guys on is. Is that the way you verse, you view policies versus legislation as well?
I, um, so when you say reuse, I would say nor recycle. Um, like, like fixture, you know, you want to make sure they're properly disposed of, like, heightened and.
Yeah.
I think lumber in some cases can be repurposed, re-proud of, but. So I think you got to be careful, it's not reuse, but recycle.
Ri, and recycling and reuse are two very different things, so we did have a lot, we did have a lot of discussion. Unfortunately, there also aren't a lot of outlets or, uh, C and D processors that process that material. Or recycling in our area either.
And then.
Currently, it's only clean wood and metal.
Other thought is you're gonna get a lot of pushback for all time, I mean. I can't envision the town, Canada's putting something like that in the code, I think it has to come either from the town or the state.
So again, these are totally optional, nobody is forced to do any of these, they're just, and it's. So basically, within this action item, there's different, there's like five different point tiers. And this is just one way that you could earn points.
Yeah, I I guess I'm saying, I don't think it'll fly.
Yeah.
I agree with Burke.
I mean, I I like, yeah, I think it's a good idea, but.
Yeah. And again, this is just, it's an optional program, it's optional to even work towards this certification through the program. And this is just one, section five, this is one action item, there's like a hundred and fifty different other action items.
And if we. Becomes part of a code, though, that. Means you have to do it, it's not an option.
Yeah.
And so does the town want to, or is it a code, or they want to make it an option, an option, something available? Residents, I I'm not sure, I'll have to think it through.
Yeah, so and.
How much money are we talking about as far as these points?
These grants.
Are we talking fifty bucks? Are we talking?
Um, no, it's, I believe the first tier is ten thousand and the second tier is twenty thousand. So you keep earning points and every time you you get to the next level, you get, I think it's ten, twenty, and then I think it's fifty.
Yeah, I think the town has already got with the jail. With the lighting and, uh, maybe some other stuff we've got, I don't know.
Yeah, they upgraded them.
I think it's a hundred and twenty.
I don't know how much dollars it.
Is the, um, they haven't applied for certification yet.
And Chris. I know Chris Vestola is pushing this, would like us to participate in the total program, not necessarily.
He announced some committee, but then, but it'd be decided a year ago.
Yeah, I don't know if.
On the website.
You, yeah, you can't apply until you have a committee.
Yeah.
So. Um, and again, this is sort of, I I won't be able to participate in any like actual. Committee or anything because I do review the applications that come in. Um, and award points or deny points. I will never review the town of Canada ice or any in Ontario County. But I do review surrounding areas, so just it kind of food for thought. Um, I guess I should have printed, maybe I'll email it to you Ted, like what the, the current way that it's written. And just any, if anyone had any suggestions.
Okay.
On really how to, um, improve it so that it is a little bit more clear and usable to. Towns that are interested in making.
So are you finding that people are putting this down as a policy as opposed to a code amendment?
They.
Don't you have enough?
They can.
Policy would be different.
They can get points for either.
Okay.
They'll, they really get points for anything right now, like if the highway department, uh, reuses their millings. As like shoulder material, that's technically a construction and demolition reuse policy. So that's what I mean, policies are more like inward facing.
Yeah.
So that's technically something they could get points for. We just want to clean it up a little bit, make it more clear. Um, cause a lot of it is just those broader construction materials right now. And we want to have options for communities that are interested in, um, promoting deconstruction. Over just, you know, and it, and the, uh, places on the lake made me think of it when you said they're two really nice houses, like. And they're just gonna demolish them, whereas if we had a policy that promoted salvaging materials. Out of those and set up just landfill-like material.
Actually, the owner is looking into that on his own. The U wings are looking into possibly even maybe moving one.
Yeah.
But if not, maybe doing some of this stuff. What do you call it? It's not demolition, but reuse it is deconstruction. So he's, he's looking into that anyway.
Okay, well.
His own.
Let me give you one of my business cards, are you gonna meet with him again?
Uh, yeah, eventually, uh, sure.
Uh, I'll give you, if you need any assistance with that, we might, our department might be able to, um.
Oh.
Help him with some resources or at least point him in the direction of. We'd love to chat with him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I got one quick thing. I'm gonna become a snowbird. Which means I don't get to play with you folks, probably after August. Because I'll miss too many meetings. So if you've got any friends, family, associates, that you want to fill the position. Uh, like I said, I think August will be my last meeting.
Okay.
Alabama.
Alabama.
Okay.
Keeping the Gulf Coast warm.
Sorry to see you go, but we'll appreciate your heads up.
Was that?
If Forrest goes, I'll say.
Yes, he is.
Could be. Well, I hope I can come up with a shrimp deal like he did. Thanks, Paul.
Okay.
So, whenever you get ready, you just send the letter to me and. Gonna resign as of a certain date.
Okay.
And then the last thing I had was there, it's gonna, the D E C is going to finally begin their timber harvesting on the. Properties on Canada's Lake Road.
Yeah.
Um, trees have been marked for about four years, I think, and they put in a driveway or culvert, uh, in. Across from the. South Trail so they can access some of the property.
They're gonna do on the state property?
Major, major timber harvest. I asked Eileen, I said, well, did we get an application? And she said, they don't, and they're the ones that approve the applications. So they don't have to, they don't have to even notify, they did notify Eileen as a matter of. But I don't know how much detail, and I know they've talked with Jeremy, though.
And they posted, they're posted publicly.
Some new signs that are out there last week, I'm explaining the philosophy behind it. I've looked up there, I'm not sure they're all old times, I think some of them are hardwoods.
They got oak chair, big around his head table.
Yeah, you can read there, they've got two big signs down there at least, but they're going to start that, uh, soon. I asked Eileen, what date did they give you, she's.
Okay.
Have a date, but there's gonna be some major, uh, timber. The poster said, you know, it's comes a point where the growth is, the growth rate is so low. It's time to harvest and they, and they've surveyed a counted number of new. Growth trees of a certain size, so it's ready, it's ready to clear it out and allow it.
You got like a hundred years or at least on those sidewalks.
Yeah.
Where nothing's been touched.
So you're going to see some activity down there if you go down on.
Didn't know that, Tom.
Anything else?
Great meeting, there's a lot of info on this, yeah.
A motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
Dwight, is there a second? Second, all, all in favor? Close, thanks, everyone, we'll see you next month. If not.
Did you want something done with these chairs?
Yes, um, those chairs need to be stacked and moved back against their, don't block in the voting machine. Cause I would need to move that out tomorrow.